The February Village of Cornwall Planning Meeting for seven o'clock. Two minutes short. At eighteen, February twenty twenty five. We have all our board members and we have a core, we're good to go. And today's agenda, we have three topics. First is going to be all business, we'll take a look at the minutes. Then we'll take a look at Storm King Theater and then we'll go to Shoreline, Shore Road. Okay, any questions? All right. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting in December?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Second? All in favor? Aye? Good, all right, so we have one sustain, four approve, four aye. What I'd like to do now is go to the Storm King Theater Project. And if I could have a representative from Storm King Theater that would like to do two things. One, kind of give us an update of what you have. And then go into what you have new. That would be very helpful for the board. Thank you.
So we'll start with the overall site. And we'll go to the accessory building. If you guys can see that.
That's good, that's good enough, that's good enough.
Again, this is existing conditions as it's been. This is life. So at the last meeting, there was a couple of additions that were required on the plan. Manny had asked about the sidewalk along the road and I did meet with Dave Albersen on site. He liked the idea, the concept of wrapping the building. And he said he would work with me on, you know, the design. Since it's going to be partially on my property.
Partially on the village, okay.
It'll primarily go in the gravel area that's there now. The surveyor came out, he shot some grades. So we were able to maintain a relatively flat access. Wrapping the sidewalk around. There was never run the last plan and I didn't pick it up. He had it, the sidewalk coming into the wrong door. So it actually, which benefits us, it's a longer run, so we can keep it flatter. It actually goes in a little further back. So what happens here, and I'll show you the detail for this. We plan on doing, it is a fence, but it's more of a decor. More of a decor, you know, we're going to do like panels. And we're going to have memorabilia from the theater to the movie, kind of wrapping. This is kind of an ugly area here, we have transformer, we have, you know, the stairs going down to the sub-basement. So that'll screen that area, you know. Lighting, we're going to have pathway lights, low voltage along the screen, just to illuminate the screen. We're going to have a down lantern and a down lantern at the building. Again, just to keep the area from being dark. But no large area lights, no bright lights in the area. These evergreens are existing along the property line now. We're going to continue the evergreens along the perimeter. These are going to be New Arborvities. And then we had a landscape design done with a list of our plants. That are going to be nice planting bed at the entrance. Or the secondary entrance, I should say. And some plantings along the sidewalk, just to give it a little bit of character. We did shoot the grades from the floor. So what's going to happen as we come around, a couple of things. One, this is going to be a cot of a few feet. So we'll have Lou or Pietini's had access through the back. So that's going to end up being like two or three steps for him to get his goods in to there. But it'll be flat to that. And then the door of the theater itself, because when you, the floor was originally sloped. So that is the original door that's there, it's a double door. But when you step down to the door and then you slope back up to the theater. So we're going to replace the door and we're going to raise the header about a foot. That'll make this, I don't want to say dead flat, but very flat coming in. And very close to the elevation of the floor inside. We'll be within probably six inches over, you know, four or five feet. Sidewalk grades, handicap, the building didn't change. You know, we have some more details on that, on the, on this page. So this is going to be a profile of what we're. I guess it's a fence, I don't know how else to describe it. So it'll be posts, it'll be framed nicely. And then we're going to do two inlet, insert panels, which will be posters, things of that nature. Uniform as you walk through that back door. The building itself, we did lower the roof, we changed the roof profile to get it within the height restriction. We're going to do a board and bat siding. We like to do it in, you know, a dark gray-black. So it's kind of like blends into the backdrop. The double doors in the front, as we had mentioned, we're going to have as the refuse area, so it's inside. So that'll be contained and out of sight. The center of the building. We're anticipating, you know, we're doing it now even for Christmas and other things. The need of a little shop to make things for stage and other things. This will be kind of a work area for what's going on in the theater. And then there'll be storage above the refuse. Storage in the loft above and storage below for things that'll be coming in and out. That pretty much covers the changes we have to the site and to this, this structure. Same renderings of the theater, really nothing has changed here, just the. To reduce the number of seats, that was just for, we don't even know if we're going to have that type of seating yet. You know, it's just a matter of how the layout is going to be, just to give a typical layout. But again, just to remind everybody what we had talked about and what we presented to the state. The building is self-supporting, you know. Storm King rents this area as the restaurant, the apartment above. What was the deli area, you know, is going to be now a service kitchen. And the upper room, which had already been tied to the restaurant from many years ago. Will be used for events, small parties, you know, whatever, more of a restaurant use. And the lower section, well, we're going to work in tandem. But the lower section, that's why we went to the extent of running all this around with a handicap accessibility and a separate handicap bathroom. Because there may be certain uses that will be done just as, you know, just in that room. So we wanted to have that option to either combine the uses or, or separate them. And I'm not sure if I forgot anything, but.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. What I, what I'd like to do is, is first ask our, our engineering consultant for her thoughts on this. Go ahead, Lena.
I'm here for Jason since he wasn't able to make it tonight. So overall, Jason had no major concerns after looking at the plans. He did want to address a few items. The first one being that the required parking count should be confirmed. I know you guys had proposed thirty-three spaces. But I think when Manny and Jason had discussed it, Manny had come up with seventy-four is needed? Seventy-eight, yeah. So that there should be some agreement on, on that. The second one was that, which I think you mentioned, was the proposed sidewalk on Churchill Street is in the village right of way. So I guess some agreement on that should be made as well if not. The third one is that the stormwater from the accessory shed appears to be discharging into the street. Which can cause some icing concerns, especially if people are going to be walking around there. So that was one of them as well. And then lastly, to provide cut sheets of the lighting that you're proposing. Just some more information on that would be good. And then just some minor engineering comments such as having ADA signage details, updating the legend to include the fencing line. And that was all from Jason for this, so.
Do you have a, have I got a letter by chance?
We do not have one yet, I believe we only got the plans end of last week, we haven't had the chance.
So we'll, we'll get that though.
Yeah, you guys will get this, yeah.
So you can put that in writing and then provide it to the code enforcement to give to you, okay? That'd be great, Lena. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now I'd like to hear from the board, I'd like to go with Kristen first.
I'm just asking what the status of the parking situation is. I know there was some discussion last time about an agreement when the property was sold to the village. And I don't know what the status of the search for that.
I'll recap my position, I'll let Dominic speak to that. First of all, the building, you know, in nineteen thirty-four, you know, the village board voted for this particular building as it is to be a theater for up to six hundred seats as part of that resolution. Over the years, it had operated as a theater for many, many years. Evolved into an auction gallery. Many different uses. I came to the planning board in nineteen ninety-eight when I purchased the building. And we revisited those approvals. At that particular time, we were fitting out the entire building. It was going to be set up primarily for ballroom dancing, but for events. And I provided the board with the minutes from that meeting and the calculations that were done for this square footage. I mean subsequently, I went back to the board in two thousand and one, and I believe two thousand and two for the addition of the upper room and the apartment. But through those different meetings. And speaking with the prior owner, because I hadn't done that before, because it was raised again. Numerous times, it had come up about the parking. And Joanne Grant, who ran the auction gallery. This parcel, you know, was part of this, it was the parking for the theater. She has a version of her memory. But one common thing from Howard Proter, who handled it for the village. And from Joanne, that former owner, is that the agreement. It was sold for a nominal amount and the agreement was that that calculation for the parking would be used for future use of the theater, wouldn't be held against the theater. If she gave up the lot, then she can't use the building anymore. So Howard remembered it. I searched the records. Unfortunately, and Howard was not aware why it wasn't filed properly. So after a series of, we talked about the theater, I believe it was in two thousand, what year was the resolution, Beth?
Two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight? So two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, we had, somebody had some interest in the theater, we started coming back, they raised the issue again. And as a result, I went to the village board. Howard, again.
You recognize that fact that.
Yes, stated, you know, this is.
That had never been formalized, if I may.
And, and the village board voted at that meeting to pass a resolution. Formalizing, am I saying it correctly?
Correct.
You know, that this was the intended agreement, we don't know why it wasn't formalized. And now we come to find out that they actually never voted. Why?
Well, they, they never adopted a formal resolution, they directed that one be drafted up.
Yes, but it never, never went to the next step and I never followed up, I didn't know to do that, you know?
I wasn't involved.
But Dominic will speak, speak further to the code and.
Yes, you know, so we, we have this kind of, it's an important backdrop because I think it, it provides the history and, and certainly, you know, let me take a step back for a moment and still, you know, like I, I just was brought on board by Ray and Elizabeth. And it's, it's a true privilege to be part of this project. You know, some of you may know, and, and probably nobody should know, but, you know, for the, ten years ago, my son was at COH Elementary. And he went to see, you know, the Polar Express there that they were showing at Christmas time. And it literally was on a portable screen, you know, that you, you know, like one that you would pull up. And they had a little cart, you know, with a projector on it and it had two little speakers on it. And so all these students like came out, you know, to see the Polar Express, but they're watching it, you know, on a screen that's probably not much bigger, if at all, like bigger than TVs in people's houses. And my wife said to me, she says, you know, you should go to the PTO meetings, you know. And, and she says, but don't volunteer, like go to the PTO, like don't serve as an officer. So I go and like I'm the only man that goes like to, to the PTO meeting, they're like, oh, we have, we have a father here. And anyway, you know, we got into this discussion and we ended up over the course of Rocco being at COH Elementary. Of upgrading significantly, you know, their, their screens and the projectors and the sound system. And we did that, we just raised the money and I started showing movies there once a month. And we had a fantastic turnout, you know, during that time. The pandemic affected all of that and, you know, and he's moved on. But then, you know, I got, because I was doing that, I got roped into showing movies at, you know, the Cornwall and Hudson Special Events. So we're showing movies outside now, you know, to the members of the community. And I only mention this as background because like the idea of this is a kind of a culmination of being able to have a community space where you can be showing movies and whatnot. And the point is, you know, apart from the fact that I'm particularly, you know, thrilled with the fact that this, you know, has potential for coming here now. Is that, you know, when we were doing at COH, when we do it at Donahue Farm, or even at the Riverside, like a great many people walk. You know, they walk. And they, they, you know, they came down to the elementary school, like I can envision like a scenario here, just like when it was approved in nineteen thirty-five for six hundred seats, that a great many village residents would simply walk. Not everybody, and it's a different society now, you know, eighty years or ninety years on from then. But you have to marry that with all the background regarding the sale of the lot, the eminent domain that was threatened. And then ultimately, the sale of the property that became the village square. And the reservation or the intent to reserve that for this space as well is in the backdrop of actually what is your code? And your code for the CBS district, in my opinion, envisions exactly this type of scenario where you have uses. And you have the ability to have using municipal parking lot, you know, as being joint parking, you know, that will serve this in, in addition to having people walk here. And it, in my sense, in my reading, it's the only common sense reading of the CBS district as it relates to parking. And the reason is, is that if someone was to come in and propose, you know, a new structure, you know, somewhere in the village. Not that, you know, they would have to knock something down, you know, like, like they would have to knock two Allison's down. For instance, and say, we're going to put in a new theater, we're going to put in a new restaurant here. Like if you calculated the parking for that, like no, no business coming into the village in the CBS zone. In my opinion, would actually meet the strict code requirements for parking unless, unless you acknowledge the fact that A, people are going to walk and B, like there's also municipal lots as well. So I think in that context, you know, because the, the information regarding the history and what should have been done and it would have been nice to have been in the chain of title and it would have been nice if the village board had actually adopted that resolution. You know, I, I think it's, it's really kind of, you know, additional material on top of what your code which controls. Which is you're in the CBS district, yes, there are parking requirements for these kinds of uses. But CBS Zone says a couple of things. One, it says that off-street parking doesn't necessarily have to be on this lot, it can't be on this lot, we have two spaces, right? Two, you know, so whether the number is thirty-three spots or seventy-eight or a hundred and seventy-eight, like we just, you, you. If that's like the beginning and the end of that conversation, well, then that's going to be the end of the conversation because obviously we can't provide it. But when you count in the municipal lot, and there's two of them, because the village also owns the one at Storm King Fire. And only the ones that are facing directly the firehouse are actually reserved for the firemen's use, the rest are open during the day. Teachers park there. You know, and then at night, those spaces are empty because it's available to anybody else. Somebody going to Painters can park there, someone going to Cheyana, wherever they're going, like there are available parking spaces for that. So all that stuff is, is, is important, I think, background information, but the controlling thing is the code. And there's two provisions in the code, I think, that you can be mindful of here. And one is like I said, that off-street parking can be used in any available area. And secondly, the board does have some discretion determining whether or not sufficient parking is being provided. And so with that, you know, no way that you would provide a parking violation in the current plan. Elizabeth, for this current ice situation that we have out there with all the ice skating rinks throughout the village. Went out and actually counted all of the parking spaces. So I'll turn it over to you for that back now, I was bad in that.
So? So we, you know, based on the ninety-nine seat capacity, you know, we have one space for three seats, there were thirty-three required. So we have two handicap spaces on site. And forty-four spaces in the municipal lot and twenty-one spaces in the firehouse lot. And that doesn't consider the street parking, those just in the two lots.
While we're on this topic, I'd, I'd like to ask a question about the usage of this. Because you mentioned, you know, public and obviously it's a nonprofit, but what do you, how do you envision, Ray? This facility being used? Who's going to use this? Can the village use this at no cost or is there a cost or, I mean, how is this going to be?
So we, two thousand and nine, I purchased the train station in City New Verde. Restored the structure, didn't have any tenants for the inside. And a young couple actually from Cornwall took the larger portion of the room and created a black box theater. Which to some extent, and we've consulted with them a little bit, we're going to, we're using this as somewhat of a model for the, this is the. This is this room.
Right.
So that's why we created the separate access. But what they did and what we intend to do, my daughter's going to be running this, this as a nonprofit. Is to offer it to all types of venues, I mean, uses, I don't know the correct terminology.
So it's open broadly for any use. If you are hosting a public event for free for the benefit of the public, it's free for you to host that event.
So something along that Dominic was mentioning.
We will be partnering with the Cornwall and Hudson Special Event.
As far as being able to take, do movies in there for young people, students, et cetera, is, is free to the public.
Yes, yes. So the vision is, one of the classic uses of the original theater, and you hear this from a lot of people that have memories. Is there was plate of plays, there was movies that would play after school. And the kids, the village kids from Cornwall and Hudson would walk home, stop and watch a movie. And many people in the village that are still in the village from that time recall this and it's such a warm memory. So one of my visions is to maybe once or twice a month, we will host a movie. Have, you know, moms and dads can, caretakers of all kinds can hang out, it's Storm King Lounge. Kids can go in, watch a movie, have a good time, get a little bit of independence. The end, everybody continues their journey home.
Thank you.
And separately, you know, if it's a for-profit, like we had dance studios, we had, I can't even think of the number of people that just sometimes needed a larger space.
Sure.
The room would be available.
Yep.
So it's a mix on who wants to rent.
And yes, it, it would be proportionate to the use. And, you know, the objective, I mean, obviously nonprofit does have to create income, so there'll be some events, you know, that will hopefully have ticket fees, things that will go to the nonprofit. The upper room will be exclusively run by, you know, Storm King Lounge. And it will blend, everything that they're going to do, they may have, they may bring in some entertainment. It's not going to be charged for entertainment, but they'll get the benefit of drinks and dinners and things, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, there'll have to be some fundraising for the free movies, to be quite honest, it's probably more information than you.
No, I was just trying to, I was trying to understand, you know, it brings more than just a pay-for-use availability to the village.
Right.
I'm just trying to understand that.
Right. So a, a good example is a couple of years ago, it was a special events committee for Valentine's Day showed When Harry Met Sally. But it's the winter time, so we couldn't show it outside, so we asked Storm King Theater and they allowed us to show it within their auditorium. And whenever you show a movie, any like commercial movie, you have to pay a license fee. And that license fee is around five hundred dollars per, per showing, depending on the movie. So we have, you know, I mean, we have people to donate, you know, that to make these things happen. We also sold cupcakes, you know, we had awesome cupcakes that were like in any event. You know, and people like came and they, you know, and, and they bought those and that goes to help defray the cost of doing these community events, you know.
Do you see it being used how many days a week?
Honestly, a couple of days at the most. I mean, it's, you know, this is not something that, and I, I say that, but if, again, if you had like a dance studio or yoga that maybe wanted to do small events there, that could become a regular thing and it could be an income stream for the nonprofit. But typically, events that we'll be planning are going to be every, one every other week or one every week at the most.
I'm sure we can average it out because basically what's going to happen is a lot of the winter programming that we have right now, it happens around the holidays. After that, it's dead for months, right? And then everything is done outside in the summertime, whether it's the concerts at the gazebo or the movies down at the river, right? Everything is happening outside. So the idea is to create, we'll have a community calendar where we're hosting these public events. And we're going to figure out how to space that a bit and right now it's dead season, like there's nothing going on. So we'll probably have a little bit more active programming around this time of year. But I would say we'll probably have a goal for an average of three public events a month. If you want to just scatter that throughout the year. And of course, we're going to need breaks, I'm going to need a break, I'm running this, I mean, I, I do the holiday stuff for special events right now, I need a break at some point.
I'm just trying to get a feel for how busy the village is going to get.
That's a great question.
It's not, it's not a first-run theater. So it's not like if you want.
It's not like every night at seven o'clock.
No, 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 you want to see the new Bob Dylan movie, like it's not, it's not going to play here.
Well, I would see that though.
And, and we are showing it this summer, but outside.
I had a, I had a couple of questions about parking. So the original that, the agreement that you mentioned that village never filed, Howard Proter never filed. How many spaces were allotted at that time?
So they, they, by understanding, and I wasn't part of that, is that the, the quantity of spaces that exist in that lot would be used in any calculation for any use of this building. So am I, am I saying that correctly? Yeah, yeah.
Is that the covered area thing, Dominic?
What's that?
Is that the covered area thing? You know, there's always an, there's always an argument about the covered area of the lot or something? No, that's not it. That's not it. Okay, sorry. So, so no, no number is known that was proposed at that time.
Well, there's forty-four existing spaces there, so what we would suggest is that those forty-four spaces should count towards this.
So I was wondering, has any one of you approached the school administration? Because the parking lot in the back has forty spaces. If you throw them something, they might allow you to use that?
I mean, we, we honestly believe we're not going to have an issue. But I do think it's worthwhile exploring that, you know, for any, just in, if things start to grow and there are some larger events. It would be definitely worthwhile exploring that.
Because that would.
Because none, none of the events are going to happen during school hours, that's for sure, so.
No, plus that's an administrative building, right behind, on the idle while.
Oh, the library, the library.
The old library.
The old library guy.
I was thinking of the school, I'm sorry.
That's the district office now, yeah. Behind it. Plus the jewelry store.
The jewelry store is not interested in.
Yeah, he has a sign now saying, don't fuck with us.
Yeah, he has a sign now saying, don't fuck with us.
I, I used to own the building and they were our tenants and I don't even know what the thought process is. So I even think that, it's just odd, I don't know. They don't want anybody in their lot, so I can say.
Probably the thought process.
Yeah. Which is a shame, it's, you know.
So Manny, the code was one parking per two hundred square feet, right? Or that is not true for this kind of use?
In that case, it's one parking for every three seats when you got fixed seating or one parking for every forty square feet when you have open space. That will be the requirement for this particular project, including the restaurant.
Well, we don't know how our seats.
Not, I mean.
Christian, do you have any ideas?
I, I, I just, I like to visualize things. So when I go past Storm King Tavern and I make it right on the one-way street, I come around back, the lot, what will I see there?
So what you're going to see. So looking, looking back, I guess you have to look at both together. So you're gonna be on Churchill Street.
Right.
And you're gonna look back.
Right.
So as you come around the corner, the sidewalk that ends
Yep.
will now continue all the way around. That screening, the signage screening
Yeah.
is gonna wrap the sidewalk to the entrance. This planting layout is gonna be landscaped around. There'll be two handicap spaces that you pull straight into with a sidewalk that ties to the side door. Then looking back, where you see the garbage and the dumpsters and the kayaks now, you're gonna see, this is the face of the garage. So these two doors are gonna house the dumpsters and the waste, so it'll be enclosed. And then there'll be a side door that will access, you know, the storage and the shop area for the theater.
So people won't be entering at that spot? People will come through the front in that?
No, they, they do both. So if it's a small event, you know, that maybe twenty or thirty people that may be odd hours when the other part of the building isn't open, this is a handicap accessible entrance. So you come in directly to that room and use that room. If it's going to be maybe an evening event with a movie, maybe you enter, you can enter from the main entrance. Maybe they have cocktails up here, I don't know, you know, just then go into the lounge room. So it's flexible.
Eric?
With those events, is there gonna be like a notice on the, on the village website of when those events are on the calendar?
The public events, probably, yeah. So we did that this year for the first time. We just put a calendar together and released that, I don't know, unless you're floating around. So we would probably do something like that with our yearly programming from the events. The vision that runs it, it'll come from Cornell Hudson Special Events or it'll come from from key events, which will be formed as a hybrid of special events as well. So it's the same thing.
So if you're expecting a large event that is non-public, right, like a private, so is there a way you're gonna let the public know that? It's gonna be a really large event.
Like for the special events, we have our own Facebook page, we have a couple thousand members on that page. And so as Elizabeth said, she put together a calendar of all the things that we have planned for this coming year. And, you know, we post it there. The problem is, is that the only people that are on Facebook see what's on Facebook. So, you know, we also provide it to the village. We post it around town. We also let the Cornwall local know, so the local will, you know, say upcoming events, you know, things like that. Reaching people now is very difficult because everything's kind of fragmented. One thing I draw the line at is TikTok. I'm getting on TikTok, I'm not telling people that I know that's coming up.
I just printed a giant poster though. So right now, if you look at the theater, you'll see a Hunter the Holidays. This is our holiday series.
In the original sign boxes from the, from the original theater, so.
So it's been so cold, I haven't been able to hang it, but I do have the calendar. So my vision would be, we would use that box to continuously promote upcoming events, but also around January, February, like Q1 type of time of year, we would have the annual calendar that will publish all the public events.
But we're not gonna know how large they are, right? I mean, that, that can make
For public events.
Just whether I walk or I drive, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. For, I mean, our public events. Besides the ball drops, I mean, there's nothing like the ball drops. We gotta kind of move that out of the equation here. I mean, a hundred and fifty, would you say, at max?
Well, you have to use both rooms.
You know, it's correct, I mean, if we had, you know, full capacity, if we have a hundred seats and we have full capacity, I mean, then we'll have to come up with a scenario where, you know, even though the events might be free, they might be ticketed events. You know, where you have to register in order to be able to go because the last thing you wanna be doing is, you know, having people show up and say, oh, sorry, we can't.
Lee?
No, I, I'd like to hear public comment, let's get a sense of what the public is thinking about this application. It's still in its very formative stage, but I, I'd like to know what the village folks who are here.
We would like to hear it as well, and so we would like to discuss that the board scheduled public hearing for next month's meeting, if that's possible.
We may get to that tonight, but I, I believe what I've suggested hearing from.
We wanna hear them tonight.
I wanna hear them.
Okay, of course.
As a start.
What I'd like to hear is, if we could put those to the side as well, but I'd like to hear Mr. Carmona. Give his comments and have everybody get a chance to do a comments before we hear the public. Is that okay? Manny, your thoughts?
Good evening, board. One thing I'd like to just set for the record, the determination of the building department as far as parking location. One of the sections that was spoken about tonight was one seventy-two forty-six, section eight, subsection B, two correction, that talks about area which may be computed as open or enclosed off-street parking spaces, including any private garages, carport, or other area available for parking. It is the determination of the building department that that other area available for parking, it still has to be on-site, not off-site somewhere, like in this case, the municipal lots. The building department determination on that is that that should not be counted as parking spaces for the site, cause it's not on-site. And moving forward, the parking requirements, I think what fits best for this particular project is the same section, the same chapter, one seventy-two forty-six, section C, which talks about reasonable and appropriate off-street parking requirements for structure and uses. It further says that for existing building with site limitation shall be determined by the planning board. And I think that is a perfect fitting for this particular project, for this board to, the worth of information that you received tonight on the history of this project, put that as a foundation for your determination on how you're gonna address the parking. Because that section gives you the power to make that determination, whether the condition of the site lends itself to use this section for whatever decision you decide on the parking requirement, regardless of the number of parking spaces. Which in my opinion, in this case, doesn't really matter, cause there's nowhere to provide. It could be five, it could be seventy-eight. Can't provide. So use that information amongst yourself to make your determination on that decision. Any further question?
Thank you, thanks Manny. Anybody who have questions for Mr. Carmona?
Are any variances required?
Not if you decide to make that determination here tonight. That is totally up to you. And again, we're referring to the parking spaces.
And the height, sorry, the, the height of the.
They lowered that building so it was no height required, right? It was lower. It was lower so you don't require that building height.
That variance is gone.
The only question here will be the parking, whether you wanna deal with it on what I just mentioned or take other action.
And the total lot coverage that's highlighted in our application that doesn't require variance?
That we're gonna look a little later, I think for, not for tonight, I mean, that's, I don't, I don't, I think with my application, I included that maybe I didn't get all that information on that, on that, so, but that's something that could be reviewed during your site plan review.
Any other questions for, thank you very much. Okay. Mr. McKay, would we want to, since Mr. Murphy asked for some feedback, public hearing feedback, or just feedback from the public that's here? Would we like to dive first and then give us your thoughts?
Sure, that, that's fine with me. Yeah, absolutely.
Anyone here would like to make a comment or a statement about the theater? Most of the folks are here for sure. Okay, go ahead, sir. State your name.
Rob Kirshner, I live at Nineteen Grove Avenue.
Sure.
So we're five houses down from the theater and our backyard of Butts, Churchill Street also.
Okay.
And I've kind of changed my mind about this. I think this is a good idea. Cause what's back there now, excuse me, the dumpsters overflowing, the kayaks are sitting there. There's creatures running around. So anything to help clean that up and beautify that spot back there. Plus, I think the local community idea of using the theater for school kids and nonprofits, whatever, is a good idea, that use. Not just turning this into a big movie theater where people from all over come. The parking is always a problem. I've been to many board meetings where parking is always discussed. There's no parking. The lot is the biggest thing we have. But that's not always empty. There are cars there, so you gotta consider that. There will be cars parked there, so how that calculates in, whatever. But I just think that what's being proposed, the landscaping, the sidewalk, the screening and everything else, I think we'll turn that into a nice spot back there. Much better than what is presently there now.
Thank you for your thoughts. Lee, you have any?
Well, I, I think the, the fact that we haven't seen many arms go up, in fact, only one. And well spoken on behalf of the, those folks who favor this project. I think that we might discuss now as a board where we move and and the speed with which we move toward a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have a comment before I get, Mr. McKay, give us some thoughts?
Sir, may I ask why you were against it before?
Well, I think my original reaction was when I heard that the public grant money was gonna be given to this project, kinda didn't sit well, but a lot of people I've heard from. But if it is gonna be turned into what it says it's going to be for the intended use, they say it's going to be, for the betterment of the community in that respect. That's what's kind of swayed my mind tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Mr. McKay, are you prepared to? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, let me have, man, one more question, you got two minutes. Ma'am, state your name and.
Barbara Costa, Homeland Avenue. Since, I would just like to say that since the Yononi's family has owned this building, the general appearance of the building, the lighted signs, everything is always kept up. I, I think they're, they've just really proven that they wanna be positive in the village.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Mr. McKay? You walk us through some of this?
Well, I, I think the main concern, of course, is gonna be, is the parking. And there have been several discussions with my office and code enforcement officer and some correspondents from Mr. Cordisco, and we had some discussions with the chairman. So we've focused a lot on, on the parking, about whether there was a prior agreement and what that might have been and should it have been recorded and nobody can find it? You know, that's, that's one issue. And of course, looking through the history of the property, we know that there were prior approvals. The parking regulations in the code that we're dealing with right now came into effect in nineteen seventy-one. You know, we haven't gone prior to that to figure it out, but we know that Mr., that there were original approvals for the theater. We know that there were approvals for the apartment and the other things, the restaurant that Mr. Yononi has gotten over the years. The minutes from those meetings and the approvals don't really discuss parking in any specific way. But we have to acknowledge that they did come to the board and they got those approvals. There's a virtually illegible site plan in the file. I shouldn't say virtually illegible. It is completely illegible. I don't know what the plan says. I can't read it at all. It doesn't seem to be assigned or approved site plan, but there, there's something there. So basically, again, just to kind of repeat it, we know that the, this building has been here, it's, the uses have been approved. There must have been, there was some discussion of parking in the past because it's reflected in the minutes. But we don't have any specific documentation that says they have enough parking for the restaurant or for the theater or for any of the events. But they do have their prior approvals. So after a lot of these discussions, well, and Mr. Cordisco proposed an interpretation of the code, which led to further discussions with the code enforcement officer and Manny came tonight and he explained what he believes the appropriate section was for the board to determine. The most important thing that comes out of that is we don't need to go to the ZBA for parking variance. That a determination as to whether there's sufficient parking lies with this board. It doesn't give you a lot of guidance on what to do or how much to count from prior approvals. But it leaves that determination for this board and you don't need to refer them to the ZBA for any type of variance with respect to parking. I am curious now, I appreciate Ms. Doyle's reminding us that there's, there was a reference in the application to, or the application review to the rear yard, the occupancy within the rear yard and the total lot coverage. Now, I don't know if there's been any specific discussions about that or whether there's enough information on the revised plan to answer those things, but we're, we would, of course, if, if the parking is an issue that can be determined by this board, we certainly wouldn't wanna end up having to refer you to the ZBA for some other variance if that's possible.
So the current coverage is calculated at sixty-seven point three percent. With the improvements we're making, it's going to increase to seventy-four percent.
We're within the CBS district. And correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the code requirements is as established by the planning board, actually, CBS district. I don't, I tried to bring my version of electronic code with me, but the general code site is down, so.
Yeah, that one, that one is not, that one is not determined by the planning board, that particular requirement.
And what is the percentage?
Fifty percent.
But the, the building itself is, is existing. What we're adding to it is just the improvements.
Right.
Along Churchill.
So who would determine that?
That would be the ZBA.
The ZBA.
I would abandon this building before I go to ZBA and it eliminates the problem. You know, there'll be no storage building, that's all.
Are you talking about the, the storage building?
Yeah.
Where would you store?
I'd have to have off-site, but the disadvantage is the storage building wouldn't would have dumpsters, which would be a nice thing to get out of sight.
Sure.
And I don't know if there's any consideration for, we're eliminating the dumpster enclosure and some of the other items that are currently in the, in the rear yard, that'll be consolidated to that structure.
This is redevelopment of a previously disturbed area. This is redevelopment of a previously disturbed area, including the gravel, like counting the sidewalk, then you have to count the gravel that's there already, and other things along those lines.
Thoughts, Mr. McKay?
Well, with respect to the accessory structure, right, I don't know what, during an initial review, I think what the code enforcement officer noted that there a seven-point-five, seven-and-a-half-foot rear line setback was required, and I think the structure was proposed at only five feet.
The side yard's five, the rear yard's seven-point-five. We matched the, whatever notes Manny had given me, we had matched on this.
So the new plan shows a setback of seven-point-five in the rear?
Seven-point-five, yes.
And five?
Side.
Okay. All right. So it looks like the remaining issue might be the total lot coverage with the accessory building. But I would not have any objection, any legal objection to the board going forward to schedule a public hearing. The board could designate itself as lead agency tonight, classify the action as a type-two action under SEAKER, its rehabilitation of an existing structure, and move forward to schedule a public hearing for March. And then we would have to address the, the lot coverage issue, whether that has to be a further meeting or a modification of the plan in some way, but at least it would move the application, it would move the application forward. Obviously, Mr. Yononi has indicated he doesn't want to go to the ZBA, he wants to, you know, get this done, so I don't know how that can be addressed, whether it can be addressed through a plan modification in some way, but that would be something that would actually be within the applicant's control.
Ability to look at the code tonight, standing here, and I think that, you know, we, I, I don't want to trip anybody else, at least of all myself, or the board, by saying it should be this or it should be that. I think in the effort of moving this forward, given the fact that there are grant monies that we have to show progress on, scheduling a public hearing would be a helpful step, and as you suggested regarding SEAKER as well.
Go ahead, I have one.
I was going to ask the question, reference, when the board has the opportunity, as Mr. Cornwall said, to decide on parking, would that come with a resolution laying out some stipulations? For example, the use, you know, as they described, that's what we're providing the parking for, et cetera, for that sort of use, just so something's in writing, long-term, since we don't have anything in writing now, we have something in writing and the stipulations of the use of it, of the parking. Would that be something that we should do?
Yes, absolutely. Part, part of the, the process here, I think, is to set forth in any approval, I'll say hopeful approval, that the board might give here, would be a history of the approvals, a, a discussion of the parking, a discussion of the fact that these items seem to be lost to history. This board now is making a determination that X parking is available and that's sufficient, or maybe requesting a condition for some other additional parking. The, the code leaves this determination to you, but it doesn't give you any specific factors for you to determine, discuss. It just essentially leaves the determination for site. What's the term? The term would be... For existing buildings with site limitations. So those determinations as the parking count gets made by this board. But again, it doesn't give any specific criteria to make that determination.
So just to help me make a decision about, since we are going to decide about parking, just to help me, just to follow me along. The, the hair salon, the nail salon in the, on the Hudson Street, two eighteen, right next to, or a deli, or a music store, they don't have onsite parking, so they use public parking. So how is this different? Am I making sense?
This is, this is not, this is not different, because I just mentioned, we're not counting that parking space, those public parking spaces are their space. It's just there and it's available to all. That's why you, you fall in on the section C, where you can make that determination that we're not requiring for them to provide the parking specifically for the building, but to use the surrounding parking, street, lot, whatever the case may be. It's almost like giving a variance, but you're actually just doing a waiver for parking. After you, you know, make the own determination on all the factors you heard, based on those, we agree that they can, they deserve a waiver. But you're not assigning any parking anywhere.
And that can't bring Article seventy-eight against us?
Oh, anybody could bring an Article seventy-eight against us, I mean, no, I mean, sorry. The building inspectors has interpreted the code. Under the code, this determination is made by the planning board, not by any other board, so that's the process. And, and to avoid an Article seventy-eight action, you would have to make sure that your decision is not arbitrary or capricious, and that it complies with the law.
All right. Other questions from the board? The way ahead, Joe, as far as, you mentioned something upfront, which I think we should do first, and that's, that's the lead agency sequel. Is that a, a motion? That we, we think it doesn't need to be circulated, it's, it's a type-two, and we move forward as lead agency, and then we need to take another look at the next one, which is public hearing or not? And then the last is, do we do the parking tonight, or do we wait until after the public hearing?
No, I think that would be part of the public hearing. So generally, whether it's one resolution or two, the board would be establishing itself as the lead agency. There are no, you can do that if you want me, if you want me to, I can paper it later. I can tell you what the motion should be, and if somebody wants to call for it, you can. So this board will determine that it's the SEAKER lead agency, because there are no other boards that can make this determination. It will classify this action as a type-two action under SEAKER, in that it's a redevelopment of an existing site, and then the board can determine to schedule a public hearing for the March meeting.
Twenty-five, March. Okay. Any questions from the board on that?
No, no, I, I'm willing to make that.
You want to make that motion?
You want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make it.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's, that's for the first one, or all of them tied together?
That's everything.
That's everything?
I will, I'll paper it.
Everything's you're going to put together legally.
I'll, I'll provide it to, to the clerk, and she can incorporate it into the minutes.
Okay.
I'll get it, I'll get it to Robin, don't worry about it.
And so the next meeting's on the twenty-fifth, it's not?
It's on the twenty-fifth. Elections are on the, I think, the eighteenth or something like that, of March, so we had to push ours a week.
Well, thank you very much.
So any other questions for Storm King Associates?
No, I think we have a clear path. We understand what we have to, have to address, and we'll work on addressing it.
Okay.
And one thing that I wanted just to close the loop on is that, you know, in connection with the use, if we're standing by, you know, what, what we're telling you and telling the public that what the use is going to be, and so having that, you know, in a resolution, resolutions I like to write, you know, say that, you know, the applicant is allowed to do what the applicant is saying, and if they want to do something different, they have to come back to the board, so I think.
That's, that's what I, if you could work this, Joe, that's, that's what we agreed to, that's what we heard.
Right, understood. And when you get to the point of just considering the parking waiver and staying by the recommendations that we're.
Manny, you had anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Cornwall Development, Shore Road Project. Thank you very much. Anybody need to take a break real quick? We'll let them, let you set up, and then we'll go from there. Ready?
I'm ready.
Well, let me, if I could just get my attorney back.
Absolutely.
Control.
Of what?
I don't see. Oh. Oh, right behind the sign, the signs. There you go. I don't know how to operate it, so I'm going to pass it this way.
Oh, you got locked out?
Locked out. All right.
It needs one more minute.
I think we got the physical coffee, we had electronic version.
Oh, okay. That's reduced.
I'm not sure much.
Fiber.
Yeah, no, we, we had this. Yeah, thank you.
You want to take that, or you want to keep it? I don't know.
I'll keep it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sure he's going to be here in a minute. Go ahead.
I'll warm up. David Nematko, we're the architectural firm that's presenting this project to you, and we're happy to be back after a, a certain period of time that's passed. I think we will last before you in November, and since that time, the project has evolved quite a bit. We've met with the building department and several times to receive their comments, and then just recently, we were able to get comments from Pitt and Jarrow's office, Jason and Lena were at the meeting, and we were able to review their comments and proceed. So how has the project changed? Well, as you remember, it's a seven-lot subdivision that we're proposing along Shore Road, as demonstrated here, which has not changed that much since our...
You said seven.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Since our last submission, but what has evolved is we've proposed a lot more design items along the road. So we realized that the cul-de-sac is about fifteen-hundred feet, and we've addressed that with many things. One is sidewalks on both sides of the street to allow pedestrians or homeowners with their children or families to be able to walk around safely. We've introduced ten light poles that would be dark sky compliant, so wouldn't illuminate greatly, but it would confine the illumination to the street and to the sidewalks. They're period lighting, so it's a little bit more consistent with the Village of Cornwall, and that's actually, every house design is, that would be our intent, to be consistent with, with the village. In addition to that, on a safety level, we've introduced four fire hydrants, one towards the beginning of the new road, which is now, we're proposing McGregor Road, one of the founding fathers, I guess, of the Village of Cornwall. He was, developed a depot here back in the late sixteen hundreds, so the, so the project's called the McGregor subdivision, and the court, and the road would be named after him, McGregor Court. So as I was mentioning about the fire hydrants, there'll be one towards the beginning of that road, one towards the end at the cul-de-sac, and then five hundred feet in, in both directions, to give protection for the neighborhood and to allow emergency vehicle access, or fire engines and fire trucks to have access to water. Subsequent to that, actually, before I go on to that, in line with that, we did start to develop renderings. They're not complete, but they are starting to depict what we feel the neighborhood would look like. So with your permission, if I could just pass them out, we didn't have time to, to submit them by the date, so I have a few to share with you.
Sure, make it sure, make it sure.
Yeah. We're good here.
Thank you.
As you could tell... As you could tell from the renderings, we are enhancing a pedestrian neighborhood, one that's residential in nature and consistent with the Village of Cornwall. Subsequent to that, we were able to have further discussions. We addressed Manny's comments, or building department's comments regarding the name of the road and survey details, which we did have the actual land surveyed, wetlands delineations, which were done and implemented onto the site, which definitely designated two ponds that would be Army Corps regulated. We did get a chance to meet with Jason and Lena from Pitt and Jarrow's office, along with the building department. We received their comments on the technical nature, and were able to address many of them. We confirm that we, we're looking for sixteen-point-seven lots, which we want to up to seventeen, which we would require a referral from you to the zoning board. We've addressed initially stormwater design for two retention pond areas to keep all water on the property. We already started the road profiles, which also identify the water supply and sewer lines that would be located within the road and the laterals out to each house. All those designs are, I would say, a little bit beyond preliminary. They are enhanced because they're based on technical aspects of the project, the actual field measurements and surveys of the property, so we do feel that they are at a point where we need outside agency input, and that's something I'd like to get to in a little bit. The, the, in, in addition to that, actually, that is where we're at right now. We appreciate the fact that this project is within the village, and so we're able to work with the local water department and the local DPW for water supply and for traffic demands along the road, and we're prepared to do that. We, it's, that's a convenient kind of interaction because it's local. But yet, there are state and government agencies that we do need to get input from. One would be the Department of Health regarding the sewer system, the other would be from DEC and Army Corps regarding the wetland delineations and our stormwater control measures on the site. These, this, these, the comments from these agencies are so important, which leads to the fact that, at the end of this meeting, we would like what you did with the previous application, is to declare yourselves the intent to be lead, doesn't mean you're approving the project, you're just letting the world know that you're taking the lead, so that we can get the plans out to these other agencies to get their comments. It is so important for many reasons. One is time is a factor, you know, with these outside agencies. It is so important for many reasons. One is time is a factor, you know, with these outside agencies. They don't reply as quickly or as expediently as one would hope. And, but yet, their input is valuable and we would need that, you know, very much. In addition to that, with you declaring yourselves intent to be lead, agency, we'd also ask you to refer us to the zoning board. And that's also critical because we've enhanced the design so much, but we do know we need CBA approval on some of the things. The first is the seventeenth lot. There are four lots that do not meet exactly the road frontage required by the zoning code and they're basically along the cul-de-sac. And we definitely would like to meet with the zoning board and get their input.
Anything else?
Uh, no, but I'm here to answer a lot of questions.
I'd like to start off with our engineer, village engineer.
All right, so Jason wants to mention a few things. The first one was the roadway cul-de-sac length that we should mention. Um, after what you had proposed tonight, I think the board would then decide if they want to give a waiver for that. But basically, there's a section in the code, I think, that says that the length of the cul-de-sac cannot exceed six times the lot width, which is what the code had said. So whether or not you guys want to grant a waiver for that would be up to you guys, given all of your proposed new things.
In fact, before you continue, can I just remind them, the reason why we would ask for that reason a waiver or the justification is the additional lighting that we're proposing along the road to completely illuminate it, but yet with dark sky coverage, so it doesn't bleed out into the surrounding homes, just along the road and, and the sidewalks. Again, the two sidewalks on each side of the road and also the fire hydrants that we're proposing and working along with the water department to make sure that all the homes, especially towards the end of the cul-de-sac, would have the same protection as those at the beginning of the cul-de-sac.
The second item was the lot density requirement. I know there was some back and forth between our office and you guys on the interpretation of the code. Our interpretation of the code got us to thirteen units. And you guys have proposed seventeen, so I think there should be some agreement on that. Also, in terms of the new construction general permit that was put out by the DEC January twenty ninth, I believe, you guys will have to comply with that, so you'll need a SWIP.
Yes.
And the proposed stormwater basin you guys have should be expanded upon due to the steepness in soil type and the wetlands. So that was another thing that Jason wanted.
And we agree with all those points, except for the calculations of the lot. We provided algebraic calculations, we provided calculations in general vernacular, so it's very clear on how we got to it. We received no objection, you know, during the last seven days.
We want to look at the code and get feedback from Joe as well on it. But, um, yeah, the way, it's not a math issue, it's more so how you interpret it and how you would calculate it, basically. I'm not quite sure the exact wording of it, but, um, we think that our interpretation is different and it should be thirteen instead of seventeen, so.
All right. Thank you, Manny.
Um, and then a few other things. First, C, we will need an updated EAF, as Jason mentioned last time. Um, and then also, there were, there was concern about a few lots, specifically lots three and five and six to eight, um, due to its proximity to the wetlands and the steep slopes. Specifically on the lot that had the retaining wall, I believe. Um, Jason had a concern that it was very close to the wetlands and then on the other side it was very steep as well, so, um, that should be proven that it can be stable. Um, and then, yeah, I think that was it from Jason. Also, if next time you guys could submit an enumerated response to our comments so we are able to find what you've changed easier instead of like wasting time looking around, so.
That's a valid point. You know, we, the submission date, we actually all met the day of the submission date, or the day before. So the submission date was the day after. There was no time to change the plans. And so out of respect for the board, out of respect for the process, we left everything the way it is so that you have what was discussed between us and the building department and there would be no changes. But of course, it's typical in the industry, we would provide a response letter that would be enumerated in direct correspondence, you know, to their comments.
Okay, thank you. Kristen? Open comments? Questions?
I had a question on the engineering comments about part of the subdivision being within a hundred-year floodplain. So has that been addressed? Because it wasn't clear to me from reading the memo, um, whether that affected just one or two lots or how that was being addressed or dealt with.
Well, I, I can answer those questions if you'd like, sure. So lots one and two are on the fringe of the floodplain, not the floodway. So we are able to impact the floodplain without any consequence. The driveway access or the road access, a small portion of it is in the floodplain, but with DEC, we are allowed to impact it with the right details. Also, what was brought up in paragraph, uh, two, I think, of drainage, no, I'm sorry, paragraph one of steep slopes. Well, actually, it kind of bleeds from drainage down to steep slopes, but we did research and address the adjoining floodway along Shore Road and we did look at the FEMA firmate that provided online. Happily, their firmate is based on NAVD survey as a datum, NAVD eighty-eight, or that's N-A-V-D. Our survey is based also on the same datum. So the firmate shows the elevations of the floodway at about nine point one to fourteen as a plus elevation. Our finished floor elevations of the homes are at fifty-six and over. So we're over forty feet above the floodway and we feel that there would be no impact, it would, there was no impact on flood. If we were impacting the floodway, then we'd have to prove that we didn't raise the river elevation or the creek elevation, but we're not impacting it at all.
And the road, the roadway is gonna be okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay, anything else?
That was my main question.
So I have two questions and, uh, I'm not sure we are there yet. This opening of the road going into the cul-de-sac, could you help me visualize from DPW garage? DPW building?
Yes, yeah.
Where is that opening across the street? Like, I drive that road every day. Is it towards the sewer plant? Is it towards this way?
It's towards River Avenue.
Huh?
Towards River. When you come down River Avenue, you have the stop sign and you make that turn into Shore.
So first two houses will be almost flat?
Right, yeah. It's gonna be, yeah, pretty flat, that's correct.
Okay, so it's to the right of... Second was, are we, Manny, are we at a point where we need to start talking view preservation?
To start talking about the view preservation?
Yeah, I have a question as to how high these houses will be.
You could ask, I mean, but, you know, so you can get, the more information you get, the better, so you can make a decision whether to send this to, you know, but you could ask.
I'm fully aware of the public view versus individual views, the way that our district view preservation is written.
Sure.
So I know we don't protect individual views, but we do public view. So people who are on Brayden Court and people who are on Andrew Street, what will they be looking at when they're looking out back?
I, I'd love to answer that question. If you go to sheet C eight, you'll see three cross-sections through the site.
Are those, are those the, um, the critical ones?
Yes.
I was gonna ask on those cross-sections, are they the critical ones that you pulled out?
Yes.
And can you tell us, when it shows the houses on these schematics, can you tell us what lot it belongs to?
Yes. You see the, you see the cross-section line here, we did it at, we see this point over here. You see the aerial map here? So this cross-section line corresponds to this one, this here.
Could you lift that? Could you lift that?
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
My easel is not here. Yeah, it's missing. I think they took it with them, I don't know. So here's the aerial map. We did a cross-section through lots one and two from the top, for example. Then the second section, number B, we did, we're right through the middle of the site, including the upper streets, down through our street, our property and down below. And then this one is closer to the cul-de-sac. So we covered as much area as we could. In each cross-section of the site, the houses that are located on the south side, the upper part of the project north is at the bottom, south is up towards the top, the houses are thirty feet higher than the roof of the first set of houses along the new road. So these houses up here are thirty feet higher than these houses here. So if you're standing at this house or this house, you wouldn't even see, you, you'd have, well, with all the trees and everything, you wouldn't even see the roof of the houses below.
So if I'm looking at that graph that says section A and there's a, there's a house that's depicted like, you know, a drawing of a house, does that refer to a specific house on, on a lot or is that just an example of how high the houses?
That we were able to find online.
No, 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 the one, the, the, the one that's from the proposed sub-development.
Section A.
So if you go on...
So is that, that, one of these two homes, one or two?
What I wanna know is, if, if I'm looking at this thing, and this, this is an example of how it's below the sightline, is that a specific house that corresponds to a lot?
Yes.
Or is...
This, this here? Can I bring it up to you?
Yeah.
Do you mind? And next, I'll, I'll have an easel.
That's right.
So...
Second easel.
It's a great, great question. This section here is depicted right here. This, these two new houses are right here. That's the new house.
That's one and two.
One, one and two, because they're pretty much on the same elevation. The existing house that we were able to locate up here is, is right here. And that's at elevation above sea level one twenty-five. The roof line of the house below is at elevation fifty, so it's a seventy-foot difference. So that's seven times the height of this room. Well, it, well, it's, it's an eight-foot ceiling, so seven times eight, fifty-six feet, that would be the difference between the two.
Okay.
On this one here, this shows the existing house here. And then the house on this lot, the house on this lot, and then down to the road. So this house is depicted here, this house is depicted there, and here's Shore Road and then here's the Hudson River, right over here. The house, the finished floor elevation up here is about one thirty-five, one thirty-two. The roof line of the house below it would be at a hundred. The furthest one away would be at fifty feet. Big differences between.
Now, David, um, the one, the one that's the highest up, the highest elevation, or maybe it's not because of the, I can't tell from the terrain.
At the end of the...
Number fifteen. This home right here.
Yes.
Is the highest up. If you took a shot that way, do you still have that nice buffer?
Yes, because these houses are pretty much...
Because they're about the same elevation or could you draw, could you draw?
We could draw.
A cross-section, because that looks like the highest as far as up the hill.
We could do, we could do a fourth cross-section. Not a problem. Not a problem at all.
Anybody else have any questions?
I'd be interested.
Go ahead.
David, so have you looked into erosion aspect of what this will do? To the, to the higher elevations?
Uh, well, it's gonna, our erosion control measures will protect the higher elevations. That question, in two ways. One, the natural vegetation that's there. We are prepared to give a, an alberus report, probably with the next submission that will outline and describe the trees that are there, what ones can come down, what ones would stay. So that provides a natural erosion control. Coupled with that, you know, we would have measures around the southern home, the upper homes to control the road. But again, all, any water that would come down would perk into, could be controlled by trees, perk into the ground or be caught by the stormwater within the road. And we, you have two sheets that do start to provide erosion control measures. And again, you know, we would want DEC's observations and comments. That's, that's the important thing. And I, and, you know, quite honestly, I think Lena would agree. At our, at our meeting on site, I think it was, we were all in agreement that declaring yourselves intent to be lead so we can get these, these plans out to the outside agencies would be agreeable. You know, but we'll have to talk about it.
Well, I don't know, this might, maybe I should chime in now. So we had had a discussion with Lena, Jason and the chairman and myself on Friday afternoon after, I don't even know if your comments had been completed at, at that time. But, but we, we did discuss what Lena mentioned. Importantly, the length of the cul-de-sac road and, and really the lot count. And it was Jason and P and D's recommendation to get some further detail before the board sent this out for a referral. So we spent some, some time on that. Because honestly, David, we know, we, we know that when you came in tonight, you would want us to circulate. Everybody does, just, just like the theater did before. You know, everybody wants to move along. So we specifically had a substantive discussion about whether or not we were ready. And I think as Lena indicated, you want, you want some updates to the EAF and the lot count and that at least those two things specifically and, and jump in, you know, whatever you think I'm...
You have to circulate.
Right. So that would be, that was the reason that we, in our, our work session, so to speak, decided that it, we wouldn't be ready to circulate tonight.
I, no, I wish we were a part of that. Could, we could have...
Well, it was only Friday, I mean, you know, it's Friday afternoon and yesterday was a holiday, so here we are.
That's true, true. But Joe, you know, we're, as, I'm sure the owner's willing to proceed at his own risk. If, what, there would be no harm in sending it out to the outside agencies at all. There's no harm to the village, there's no, there's no harm to anybody. Because the comments that we're trying to secure have to do with DEC, wetland and Department of Health issues, which, you know, please take this into account, like kind of supersede the local, you know, municipality. And we, and their, and their comments are important. So any changes to the plans are really not gonna affect their jurisdiction.
Well, understood. And, you know, we, we expected, again, that you'd be looking for the, you know, to, to circulate. So they are, I'm not washing my hands of this, so to speak, they're, but it's an EAF. There, there are environmental and, and engineering issues that P and D wanted to address and their recommendation was to get that additional information before, before we circulated. And the consensus was that we would accept P and D's recommendation. Now, I know, I say we, I, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not making, I'm not making the decision for the board, Now, I know, I say we, I, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not making, I'm not making the decision for the board. But for the members' understanding, information, we did have this specific discussion. Lena was on the call, Jason was on the call. Their recommendation, I guess to me, to the chairman, to the board, was to hold off the one meeting to circulate for lead agency. The board certainly can decide to circulate. I don't know if Lena can explain it better than me.
Lena, what, what is the, the key details? Is it, is it because we don't agree on the number of homes, lots?
That is one important thing.
And if you, if you send it out now, and, and eventually when you sit down again and determine a new number, it changes the site plan?
Um, that is a potential thing, yes. But also, most importantly is that we would need updated EAF in order to circulate. I believe the EAF you gave us previously, it wasn't for the correct parcel. So having an EAF for the correct parcel is the most important, I'd say, as well.
Okay. So those are the details. When you, when you talk about details and circulating, you'd like to see those. Do we need to have another meeting with the engineers and code enfor, uh, code enforcement, et cetera, and finalize what, where we are on some of these issues?
We, you know, we're in a position to maneuver according to your schedule. We want to expedite it as soon as possible. The EAF is not an issue. I mean, that is a half-day thing that we can resolve and get done. You know, quite frankly, the calculations regarding the number of lots is a concern because we've had that out there for quite a while, without any rebuttal or without any refute to our argument. So, and, I don't, I, you know, I can't see that. So if we, if that needs, need to, if it needs to be resolved and we have to get together, I would ask that we do that as soon as possible. And, and with, you know, who's gonna make that, that determination too? Because we definitely are on different ends of that spectrum.
I just wanna, go ahead.
Yeah, I will say, what I know is that the EAF, it gives information on wetlands, floodplains, endangered species. So that kind of information may be important for circulation. So that the correct parcel for the EAF is really important, is what I wanna say.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, well, we, we agree.
So if, let's correct my memory. We started out with twenty-two lots, right?
Uh, twenty-one, I think, yeah.
Then we got to seventeen.
Yes.
How did we get to seventeen?
The, when the calculations were done, and the road frontage had to be included, that dictated the width of many, of, of most of the lots, except for the four that we have near the cul-de-sac. So that coupled with what is included in the calculations and what is not, you know, wetlands included, are they not? That, that evolved and led us to the seventeen-lot subdivision.
So.
I mean, essentially, David, the first was more of a concept plan.
It was.
Right.
It was a wish.
And then you sharpened your pencils, and you, you did the calculations, and there was some reduction in the lot count.
Correct.
So, right.
And also the steep.
Why is there a big difference between their engineers, their engineers? Why is there a big difference between seventeen and thirteen now? I mean, whose calculation is right and whose?
I think it's seventeen and fifteen, right? Go ahead, that's your, it's your purview.
It's based on how we interpreted the code. So I believe one seventy-two fourteen states where up to twenty-five percent of the total gross area of the parcel to be developed consists of land with slopes equal to or greater than twenty-five percent. One-half of the total of the land with slopes equal to or greater than twenty-five percent shall be subtracted from the total gross area. Where more than twenty-five percent of the total parcel to be developed consists, oh, I think it's just a repeat, anyways, yeah, that was, that was what it said. So how we interpret it was that you would take half of the twenty-five percent of the initial.
Correct. Eight, eight-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand times point one-two-five.
And use that same number again when you're subtracting from.
Exactly. That equals one-hundred-and-ten-thousand-plus. We took that one-hundred-and-ten-thousand off the gross land area and got to seven-seventy-two, seven-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand. Then at that point, we subtracted the thirty-seven percent of the area of slopes over twenty-five percent, plus the, minus the remaining twenty-five percent of the gross lot area, and came to six-sixty-nine.
Twenty-five percent, we took, it should be half of point five percent.
You took the half off at the beginning. I mean, even, even your strikeout of the calculations asked for that to be done in the beginning, and we did it.
So whatever we had sent over, I don't wanna get into like the details too much, but our interpretation of the code was that we used the point one-two five percent. So it depends on how the board or Joe wants to interpret the code as well, but that was our interpretation.
Mr. Carmona?
That's man's job.
What I did in this particular case, as you heard, there's a lot of numbers involved here. I delivered to the engineers, but if a decision need to be made on how this calculation, that comes to me. So that's, I will sit down and take a closer look, and I'll give my determination and direction. And then the applicant, if they wanna challenge or whatever they have, they're always gonna have that opportunity to do so, so that the engineers can use the same calculation method.
Sure. I mean, we need to map the same way. Other questions from the board on this particular?
So I think the reason we can't circulate or refer you, because this issue has to be resolved, right?
Yeah.
One of them. Yeah.
I mean, we, we have our two consultants.
Right.
Here saying, don't do it, don't circulate. And there's a disagreement, and we need to have Mr. Carmona take a look at the way we calculate, get that right, and then calculate, and then that's the answer. Correct?
That's not the answer he's looking for. But I can, I understand the observa, I, I, of course, I understand the observation, so sure. I, disappointed, yes, but I, you, it's a reasonable request, so.
I mean, this is important.
Sure.
We wanna make sure the site is correct. Because once that goes down and we can start working on those things, then I think we'll be in better shape.
Sure.
But I understand. Anybody else? Mike, I mean, Gary? Wait.
No, I'm, I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that was real, anybody else have other questions in general besides that, that they wanna talk about? Do we, do we want, do we hear any feedback from the public? The public have any particular? No, I know, but, just like we had from the other one. Do we have any thoughts, any comments? Just comments. It's not a public hearing. That's wishware, coaches me on, but it, like we did last time. Any, any comments? Yes, sir, state your name and what are your thoughts?
Yeah, my name is Ned Crossley, and I'm at Seventeen Idlewild Park Drive, on the bank, okay? Overlooking this project. And I would first like to know, when can I see a set of the plans in its current state?
I believe you go to the building, the code enforcement, he could show you.
Come tomorrow and see, and I'll show it to you.
He could also show you these, these cross-sections.
Correct.
And if you, you think there's another one that we need to do versus the one I asked for, then we'll ask them if they would do that cross.
Obviously, very interested in our river view, and preservation of our river view.
Sure.
And down there, and our lot goes down the bank. There's a huge bank along there.
Sure.
I call it the Bank of Cornwall, of Grand Street all the way over. And it definitely involves the residents on the end of Idlewild Park Drive, because some even setback houses have beautiful views of the Hudson. And then involves what was called Dr. Jerry's property, and, and, and then a couple of streets. I guess one of Zander Street, and then Brayden Court. So this housing, proposed housing project is, is below. I can make one comment. There's a giant twelve-to-eighteen-inch drain between the Schenkel property and our property. There's a down drain that comes out onto our property and runs down the bank. So we, our, both of our properties go down the bank, where a lot of the other properties do not. Okay? There's also a pond down in there. Okay? And then there's a railroad bed, and I'm not sure whether this property includes that railroad bed, it doesn't. And there's one of the most incredible archways under the railroad, just to make you know the fact, down through there. And it's incredibly built from this pond. So I am concerned about the use of that land. And a little further on, right now, we have a nesting pair of eagles straight across the Mudna Creek, on the Mudna Plum Point, Kawasi Park over there, just so you know that. And so we're concerned, and, and the faster, I think, reasonable plans get to the community type of thing, would be, be very fair.
Well, they are available at the building office, so please.
I don't know about it yet.
Yeah, please share that.
Let me just take a quick look at my notes here quickly. I think I hit quite a few things. And that's all I really have to say. Jenny, you have anything, Billy?
No.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Oh, Barbara Goss, the Homeland Avenue. I walk in the village a lot, so the public view is really important to me. I think that's really something that many of us who live in the village treasure. And the View Preservation District is there to protect the public view. Isn't it automatic? And my understanding is that it is an automatic, that when something is, is, the single-family homes are being proposed in the View Preservation District, that there will be a public hearing.
Are you talking about?
Can you explain that?
A subdivision or a single-family home?
Single-family home, subdivision, new construction in the View Preservation District.
There, there will be a public hearing.
There will be a public hearing, though.
Yeah, Barbara, there, there will be, for sure, for this project. There will be a public hearing.
You're talking about this project or other projects?
I'm talking about.
In, in general?
In general, the View Preservation District. It's my understanding, as I read the code, that when anything is changed, built in the View Preservation District, that it is the planning board that holds the public hearing.
I think I, I understand where you're looking at. Article fourteen?
Yes.
Article fourteen. And you're looking at the words that say, when the code enforcement officer may deem a requirement for the planning board, it says may or something, I can't remember the words in there. But there's a, a word that gives, I think, a code enforcement officer some discretion. Is that, is that ringing a bell? I think we wanna talk about this off, if you're talking a general case, we need to talk about it offline.
I think that maybe we need some clarity on this.
Sure.
And maybe a, a legal opinion. Because we had a situation on Bayview Avenue where a, a home was built, clearly View Preservation District, and there wasn't a public hearing. And now I'm asking you, is there going to be one?
For this project.
For this project, yeah, not, no.
For that project, on, on whatever, we, we need to talk about that offline.
Yeah, but how, is, is that different from this?
I can, I can answer for this. For this application, where they're seeking site plan and subdivision approval, the board cannot grant an approval until there's a public hearing. What I'm not sure, but what might have happened, and I, without looking at the code, I can't really give you a specific answer. But if it was a single-family home, and they didn't need site plan approval, or if they didn't need subdivision approval, they may have simply applied for a building permit and gotten a determination from the code enforcement officer. That's, that's a maybe, but that would be a common practice.
Except.
How long ago was this project?
In the last year.
About a year ago?
It's almost done.
The View Preservation District, doesn't that separate it from anything else? Doesn't that give it special consideration?
So ma'am, so what you're saying is?
Well, it does. Barbara, I can't answer the question of what, I think what you're asking me is, does every single building permit application in the, in the View Preservation District require a public hearing? I, I, I can get you an answer, but as I said, generally speaking, unless you're seeking subdivision approval or site plan approval, you may, you wouldn't, wouldn't have a public hearing on that issue. But I can, I can get you an answer.
I think that's a question that needs to be answered.
Yeah, that's a great question.
Not, not for this, not to be answered for this application, but as a village policy issue, I think, is what.
We're going into the same arena, so to speak, with our View Preservation District. And if we're not going to protect it, almost regardless of whether it's one, two, three homes or seventeen.
We, we will have, we will have, excuse me, Barbara, we will have a public hearing on this. They have, we have to go through a process. One of them circulate for lead agency, get lead agency, and we have SEQA. And then we'll probably have some sort of public hearing. So all this will be laid out for everybody. I, I, I understand now the, the particular property you're talking about. I, we'd have to take a look at that offline, but I, I defer to legal. And, and I think I know what article you're, you're looking at, fourteen?
And I really do, would appreciate a legal opinion, because we have this View Preservation District that it's, it's, it's not in legalese, it's pretty cut and dry.
Okay.
As to whether there's a public hearing, or whether it's referred to the planning board.
Whether the planning board or not, that's really your question. If it comes to the planning board, it's gonna have to have a public hearing.
Exactly.
That's.
I think another topic regarding this project is the tree preservation. Are we, is, we have a new tree preservation?
Barbara, they mentioned that they will provide a plan. Barbara, something you said?
Yes.
Too many. They said that already.
I did hear the gentleman mention it, yeah.
So the key on that, Barbara, is, that's, that's why the layout is so important. You can't develop a tree plan until you know where the houses are gonna be. So once they get that finalized, then they owe us a tree prevention plan. And we will look at that very closely. And so will our engineers look at it.
The last subdivision that we had here in the village happens to be just across the street. And the planning board did an outstanding job overseeing that project. It has blended nicely into the neighborhood. There's, there's different conditions involving this project. I mean, there's some steep slopes regarding that project as well. But they really, the planning board did an excellent job. So I hope that we would expect the same thing regarding this project.
Those are great points.
And I would appreciate some kind of legal opinion regarding the View Preservation District.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. Anybody else up here, anything remaining for the, the board? Okay.
I mean, I have a couple of questions, but I, I don't know if it's for the board or for you guys. We have the property right next door with one hundred and thirty acres, and it looks like, according to the plan, there's three homes that would be touching our backyard. I have just a question. The two homes in the front, right in the beginning of Shore Road, right off of River Ave, is that a driveway or a road going to those two homes?
Oh, that's a driveway.
That's a driveway, okay. There's, I know that there's, there's not that much space from the road to our backyard. So how big are those homes planning on being, and how close are our property lines?
Well, they, they, they're within the building envelope, so they have to be fifty feet or thirty feet away from your property line. And I would imagine your home is another fifty feet away.
Yeah, well, our home is on, is literally on the corner of Shore and River Ave.
Fifty-seven?
Yeah, fifty-seven, yeah. So it's, it's right on the property line. It was built in eighteen sixty, I don't think they had the same laws.
No.
Or regulations.
I would like those laws.
I mean, we could do it, just gotta vote, no. But, um, um, I just, that was one of my concerns because as of right now, our property is completely undeveloped, except for our one home. We have future plans, though, we would like to do other things with our property. And one of those things is to build in our backyard. And if you have these homes there, are we ever going to be allowed to put a road from shore or connect to this other street to our backyard? Like, is that, I mean, it might be too, or best even bring that up, but that's something we've discussed for years.
I, I don't know your property.
That's something, if you want to, you could go to the building department and they could just kind of say, "Here's your plot."
Yeah.
"What do you want to do?" and, and give you some thoughts.
I know that property at one point, because I grew up there, I lived there for over thirty years. At one point, there was a legal roadway that went back there, but over the years, it was overgrown. So I always assumed that was something that was accessible. But now it looks like that's what these drive, this driveway is, is that correct?
I'm not sure about the road you're talking about, but we're proposing a driveway.
And I wish, I wish my dad was here, he knows a lot more. So, okay, um, the other question I have is, you're putting in all these single-family homes. There's no sidewalk along Shore Road and most people walk to the bus stop, there's kids. I did it my whole life, too, walking up the hill, but from Shore Road, it's a lot more dangerous. There's a ditch on the side of the road that was never, like, the drainage issue that's there was never covered or anything like that. Do you plan on putting a sidewalk along Shore Road from entrance to river? So it's just going to be street walking for kids going to a bus stop?
Well, the impact of, of a sidewalk on Shore Road is huge. I mean, i- it's far above the scope of this project. We are proposing sidewalks on this new road, you know, on both sides of it. But, uh, a sidewalk on Shore Road would impact the drainage along that road and it probably would impact the lane width that the DPW I'm sure would want to maintain.
Yeah, okay, I was just wondering, otherwise, you're going to have, you said seventeen homes, if, if they all have kids, you're going to have X amount of kids walking on this road.
Sure.
You know, at, X, whatever.
The bus stop will be right, there's a bus stop.
There will be a bus stop.
There'll be a bus stop, right, a school bus will be right at the.
You know, my mom tried to do that for twenty years and it never happens.
Maybe for seventeen houses, they would.
Yeah.
It might do it with seventeen.
All right, that was one of my concerns.
That's a great question.
The other thing is, um, when it comes to the drainage, that easement is in our backyard. I don't know if you're aware of that, if that's something.
We're not impacting any existing easements.
Okay.
We're keeping everything within.
Because that goes into like where that wetland is. That's part of our property and going into that, so I'm just thinking like, I, I, I mean, I know, I think it was back in like nineteen ninety-eight, we did have part of that hill in our backyard. There was a landslide that came down because of drainage issues. So do you, I mean, I don't, I'm not an architect, I don't know, are, is there going to be retaining walls and?
The, the site is, the site of lots one and two are pretty flat, so.
Yeah, except there is a slope that goes up.
Um, you know what, we'll, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I really didn't see it on the survey, but I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, it's not as high as the rest of the property, but there is a slope that goes up. I would say probably ten to fifteen feet.
I have a comment on that, too.
Sure, sure.
Uh, what's your comment?
I'm sorry?
Do you, did you want to say your comment?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, you can, I'll, I'll.
Um. I'm just trying to think of what else, just because, um, you know, like the, the property next door, it's been in our family for over thirty years.
We'll have a public hearing.
Yeah.
You could, you could come into public hearing. This is.
Yeah, because that's what I said, I don't know if it's questions for the board or for them, I don't know. I just want to make sure.
Sure.
Our property.
No, those are all good points and I, and you should get them all clarified.
Yeah, okay. All right, yeah, then, I continue.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, I stand ready, so I just want to hear that the board's approval for, you know, uh, for the building department, the consultants, we can get together at will and get everything resolved. That's with the board's blessing.
That's the next, we got to do that.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Okay, we have to do that.
Excellent.
And I just need to make sure, Lena, you talk to Jason and coordinate with the, the building department and the code enforcement.
Yeah, if you don't want, just, just give me a heads up when you might meet, it might be a good idea to have me come in now that you're getting close to having a final plan.
We are, stand ready to do so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next planning board meeting's on twenty-five March, um, at seven o'clock. If there are no other questions.
The gentleman has a comment.
Who, who?
I'm sorry, uh, the owner wants to say something.
Yes.
Oh, hi.
Yes, hi.
Hi, hi.
It's good to see you again.
I, I don't want to delay the meeting because I know it's running a little late, but I just wanted to let the board know and how is everybody doing? And for anybody that's here, is, is your father Daniel?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I had a long conversation with him. So I just wanted to let the board know and any interested people out here that I spent Saturday going door to door to many of the homes in the around-your-foot radius and had good conversations with, with everyone, your dad was very supportive, actually, and, and of, of the project. And what we, what, what I found in, in talking to, uh, ten neighbors, I, I found the whole. And had nice conversations and I think the, the slope that you're talking about meets, uh, Braden Lane, Braden Court, right?
No, it's, it's from Shore Road to our backyard, like where the houses.
Oh, okay, so when we were on, I was on Braden speaking to several of the neighbors at one time, it was, it was actually, we had like a little impromptu meeting. And so one of the slopes goes up our property and, and ends on Braden. So some of the neighbors, they were concerned about erosion. So we, you know, we agreed to take a look at that, we'll take a look with David and see what we can plant with solid roots that would act as erosion control. Many of the comments had to do with view, right? So, and we're really sensitive to making sure that no one's view is obstructed. And I think that David did a good, uh, job explaining that the roofs of these houses are going to be thirty to forty feet below. So when you're standing on Braden, you're standing at the end of Andrews, for example. And then, you know, and, and on Andrews, there's only really two houses that have a, a view impact, twenty-two and twenty-three at the end of the, of the block. You know, on Blackwell, there's only three houses that have really a view impact. But you're standing so high above on a cliff, I'm sorry, just say if I'm.
Yeah, no, I was saying.
I, I have my notes, if you, if you think I'm wrong, just say it, we're having a discussion.
Well, we did, we told you, you know, that our, our feelings were that, I mean, we took you to the window.
Yeah.
It's one thing to say that it's not going to be impacted, it is going to be impacted.
Oh, you're on Idlewild?
Yes.
Yeah, I got you, I got you.
From where we are.
You're sixteen.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so from where we are, yes, it's going to be impacted. I mean, I know that's not everywhere, that's not every house, it's not every project, but we will be impacted.
Well, it's not going to be, though, because, let, let's be really clear. So let David email you, let's, let's exchange emails and let's, let's get a set of plans to you so you can see the view profile. It's not going to be impacted. You, you, you may see a roof in the distance, but your view to the Hudson, your, your general view is not going to be impacted.
That is correct.
Right, okay, so we want to be like real, real clear.
But it's still impacted. I was just saying, and I mean, I understand, we, we talked about, I don't want to.
Well, I don't want to say it's impacted, so it's, but it's not going to be, though. You may, you may look down and, you know, fifty feet below you may see a roof. Understood, I, I get it. But as you're looking at the Hudson, your, at your view, it's not going to be impacted. So we sent Gary Roach home because he was going on and on and on, so, um, but we're working with, with Gary on, number one, um, tree replacement.
Okay.
There, there will be some trees removed that we're putting in the road. He's going to tell you in his report, and I think we can, we can even submit the report ahead of time if you'd like, that there are many invasive species on that property and a lot of underbrush that has to be removed anyway. And we're getting some guidance, uh, uh, from code enforcement officer Carmona on where to, you know, replant trees. And just like in terms of the upper lots, right? We want to do two things with, trees have become very important and the, and this is what I'm finding out in all of our discussions. So it's twofold. Number, number one, we're going to, we're going to submit to the village attorney and we'll put our attorney in touch with you. We're going to file a deed covenant on every house that's on the upper tier to limit the height of the trees, right? So that there's no chance of, uh, newly planted trees blocking someone's view on the upper tier in the future. So this is a little tricky, so, so coupled with that, we want to try to, to get the exact tree height so that it obscures any view of any roofs, right? While they're not growing too high to obstruct views. So Gary in his final report to the board and to the village will make some recommendations on tree species and, and height and what we're going to plant, mature trees or not. So we, we, we're paying a lot of attention to that. And, and any comments or, or any recommendations, just, I'm always available. I'm, I've spent all day Saturday walking the neighborhood. So, uh, I'm here to find out how you want us to handle a lot of this stuff for the benefit of the, of the community. It's a great project. Okay, there, there's, there's a little confusion on the, on the calculation, you got some slopes there. But by and large, the lots are one acre minimum. I mean, the code is only forty thousand square feet, you have some lots that are, that are, that are an acre and a half. So it's not like we're asking for something that's not within the code generally, right? So we're trying to plan a development that, that really will improve the community. We're paying a lot of attention to architecture, to period architecture. You know, we're trying to, we, we, we're putting a lot of care into this. So, um, and okay, we're going to be a little delayed, not a problem. We want to make sure that the village, the board is completely satisfied with the calculations and all the information that we're providing. So, you know, what's another thirty days? It's not such a big deal. So let's, let's go with this at a, at a slow pace, let's make sure everybody understands exactly what we're doing. Um, I think, I, I'll hand every, I'll give everyone my card, you can call me on my cell, send me an email. As we have information ready for the village, we're, we're more than happy to email everybody individually. You can always meet with me, you can meet with David, and we can go through the process. If, if I took time enough to walk the community and invite people to, to a meeting that's not a public meeting, that means we want input. You know, we're not hiding, we, we want input. It's a great project, we believe in it, we believe it's going to be great for the village. We have a lot of respect for the village process and residents, I think, I think you can see that. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your, for your time, any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, if there are no further questions, uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Ball in favor? Well, thank you very much, appreciate, appreciate your input. They're loud on the table.